...in order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Arnold.
Here.
Alderman Baman.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Hedley.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Clar.
Next item is invocation led by Pastor Gerald Jones this evening, followed by a plug of lead from Alderman Hedley.
Before we pray, I just want to congratulate Dale Arnold and his son. Let's pray. Now, we give you thanks tonight for your love, your watch care, your grace, your mercy, and just your incredible blessings that come in the form of the community that we get to live in, the people that we get to live around, the opportunities that we have to prosper, to take care of our families, and to make a good living, and all those things that we take for granted that we think are rights rather than privileges, but we're grateful tonight, and I just wanted to take a minute and recognize that we know that it comes from you, and that you're the giver and the taker, and we are incredibly blessed to be a part of it. So, I pray for the proceedings in this meeting tonight, for our aldermen, our mayor, our city staff, for all the hard work that they do, and the things that they do on behalf of a community that sometimes doesn't quite always appreciate what's done and can't see, can't always see the benefits, and these folks can't always give full explanations for those things. And so, for the effort and the hardships, I pray your blessings on them and their lives, and especially on this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name.
The pleasure remains in the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is approval of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got one change on the agenda. We would like to add Resolution seventeen twenty-six. It is a resolution for the payment, the second annual installment to the Green Valley Partnership under the Cooperative Agreement. This was originally not included on the agenda because we thought that the method of passage of the original agreement would allow staff to make the payment. Going back and researching before we made that payment, though, we found out that we do need to make the payment via resolution.
Okay, that's all we need to do.
That's it.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain the motion to amend the agenda. Motion Alderman Baman.
Second.
Alderman West. Any discussion? Seeing none, off air, to amend the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Seeing no proclamations, move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens who wish to address the board come forward to the microphone and podium, and please give your name and address to the record. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board if you may? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda.
We accept the consent agenda.
I have motion Alderman West to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on the test, please. Any discussion? Seeing none, off air, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing no previous business, move on to new business, employee benefits discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as you'll recall, in previous discussions when we approved the 2017 plan year documents for our insurance coverage for the employees, several of the aldermen asked if we could bring this topic back up under new business to discuss possibilities for increases in the future and how we could structure that in order to make sure that it occurs. So, this is a, just a reminder to the board, it was requested to come back up on this meeting.
And this is in regards to the increase in the, possibly increase in the percentages in?
Yes, yes, increasing the dependent care coverage percentages, I believe was the intent.
I think I was one of those that requested that, and what I was requesting was the, the issue that was originally brought up was the fact that we wanted to make ourselves competitive with the marketplace, and when we came out and voted on the plan that we have now, what was it, we're at seventy?
Sixty-five.
And for the sixty-five percent of the family, and I think if I remember right, that other communities were at eighty and eighty-five percent. And so, I just think that we need to figure out a way to have that graduate in a way that we're going to be more competitive as we're trying to find more employees, especially from the police department, as we're looking at more employees right now we need to find. So, I just think we need to look at that and possibly have some kind of a plan to increase as we move forward, the family plan part.
I mean, I can tell you that Ryan and I do Sonic Cast Yards as the departments, and we haven't done all the departments yet, but the couple that we have done, I mean, in the time that, you know, I've been elected official, you know, we get, you know, thank yous from employees and stuff, but since we did those insurance changes, those, that has been the most thank yous, and thank you for changing that, it helps out a lot that I've never received from city staff. So, I mean, it's really noticed that we're, you know, trying to improve the insurance, and they're very appreciative, and so, I mean, I think anything we can do to keep that going, I think really helps morale and everything else out.
Well, my input real quick is, again, I know this may be not where you were going, but it's great that we have gotten the attention of our employees, that they know that we're here to try to help, and that the morale is getting better, but I think we also need to take it outside, because as we, again, are trying to recruit people here, if we're not competitive with the other markets around, then that puts us in a negative position, so...
So, is that something that could possibly be structured over a period of, say, two to three years?
To try to, to try to get there?
Yeah, we can structure it any way. I mean, I know one thing that was floated around was it'd be by ordinance, so that way it does, you know, it makes sure it happens. I mean, you can do really any intervals you want, but one idea that's floated around was, you know, every year adding five percent to it until you get to whatever percentage this board wants it to be at.
But, but with certain metrics, certain thresholds that have to be met, as far as how, how fast insurance is driving versus budget position and that sort of thing.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you, Rob, and Dale Paul has had those concerns, and I don't think that we lock ourselves into a position, I think we lock ourselves into continuing to increase as long as we don't exceed what our concerns were with the budgets and such. And so, I agree that we have to be careful, but I also think that we need to, I think we need to put those positions in place so that we can be competitive as we're looking for employees.
Do we tie that to what the increase was seen on rates perhaps? I mean, it could be a complication.
Yeah, we could, we could set, say, if the board wanted to pass an ordinance that allowed for five percent increase up to eighty percent, for example, that would be three years' worth of increases. As part of that ordinance, it could also say, you know, as long as increases do not exceed five percent, or, you know, seven percent, or whatever the case may be, and maybe by every percent that it's exceeded, the amount of match or dependent care would drop by a percentage. I think it could get complicated, so you wouldn't want to put it on the razor's edge and say, you know, ending increase over three or four percent, give yourself a little bit of wiggle room, but, yeah, there's ways to work that into there, and it's all subject to budgeting as well. So, if the intent is to get something in there to kind of memorialize what we want to do, I think the ordinance does that, but we also leave, you know, some sort of a clause in there that's obviously subject to budgeting appropriation, that sort of thing.
Can I ask a question on the training for the employees, including the police? Who pays for all that?
The majority of our training is paid for out of the general fund, so...
Including the police?
Yeah, the police department, everything except for Parks Department and Public Works, the Public Works Maintenance Division. Those are paid for out of the enterprise funds for each one. Well, Parks Department's a governmental fund, so the Park Fund pays for Parks training, and Water, Sewer, and Transportation pay for Public Works trainings. Everyone else's, their training comes out of the general fund.
Do we have any initiative for them to progress? Okay, this is not a training, but it's an example of what I'm trying to get across. When I managed a rest home, I asked everyone, what are you working for? And of course, they said money. Okay, then I said, all right, this is the way it is. I had every one of them cross-trained, qualified. I had the highest fat price employee store, however, where everybody had five, I had five. So, my metric was down to where it should be, but the incentive for the employee was there, and I just was wondering, what incentive and camaraderie do we have with all of them?
Yeah, the incentives that we give for training, I mean, we don't give a financial incentive right now, so a lot of training would be for, you know, in the police department, for example, if somebody wants to become an accident reconstructionist, the city would pay for them to go to that training, pay their way for that. We also have the employee tuition reimbursement program that we use, so really, the incentive, I guess, to the employee is the training that they receive is at no cost out of their pocket, but we don't have a set plan or anything in place right now that actually financially rewards people for training.
I don't want to train them and then have the initiative to go though.
Right.
I want to have the initiative to be here, is what I'm trying to get at, too. But, I guess this is something for the police. On that one, and, you know, I am in agreement, since I had several city employees come and tell me, thank you very much for all of you guys for the insurance. Of course, I was an instance at the police academy, because I was over asking the police department that was there for lease on it about the insurance.
Topic of the training, are we, are we moving ahead with sponsoring new, possible new officers in the academy and covering that cost, or is that something that we just talked about?
I think it's something they're looking, you're getting stuff together.
I've carried some initial research, and the basic cost for putting them through the regional academy operated by Kansas City, which is more of any academy agency, uh, a standard tuition of five thousand dollars for, and I think it's twenty-eight and thirty weeks, five thousand dollars, and then the agency provides all their uniforms, asks for high, can you remember, like, seven thousand rounds of ammunition. But what I'm getting is that if you inform the agencies, it's worrying to do that, because you have to have a, you have to have a receiver in place where you get able to drop out, you know, there's going to be some tolerated reworks, and I have to see what the options are, and that, you know, we have, we are looking into that.
I think probably what we'll try to do with that, Alderman Baman, if this is okay with the board, is we're going to continue to research the process that we can use to sponsor cadets through the academy, and try to come up with a comprehensive program that we could put into effect with 2018's budget year, unless we get direction or we need to move sooner than then. But, we just started the budget process, July fifth, actually, this is past week, we started fiscal year 2018 budget, and so, we're going to try and roll it into that entire program.
Is there anything to incorporate to change in the, in the rate for families during the budget season, or you're asking for something now?
No, I think this is, I think what Alderman Coleman's talking about is subsequent years, so next plan year probably, actually.
For the, for this tw- 2018 budget, is that right?
Yeah, it would, it would impact 2018 budget, yes.
It would, if I...
Yeah, I guess we'll need to know what direction we want to go on that. I guess the question is, does, first of all, does the board want to move forward with some type of step program to increase the percentage to sixty-five? I guess we'll start there.
Safeguards would prevent overextending the city.
I think, Ryan, you can probably come up with safeguards. What you'll need to know is the what percentage you want that cap at, probably, that'd be something else that you'd want some direction on, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, what number do we feel comfortable being, that being capped at?
I think my personal opinion would be the eighty percent, which is what we found from the research that some of the other competition is at.
I would agree, eighty, I may take three, four, five years, depending on...
I would say the max, I would say the max it would increase to be five percent a year, if all the other metrics are being met with, you know, the rates not increasing too much in budget, so... I mean, is everyone comfortable with a max of five percent until we get to eighty? And then, Ryan, you can work on the metrics and present those back to us and decide from there.
The bigger picture, you have to also, I know probably goes with our larger organizations, I understand, but if our city's that size, if we're continuing to grow, we'll see our staff grow, and with that, the expense for that, what we're talking about, will grow with it, and it's something that we have to be careful how far we're extending ourselves, because if growth comes along, it could be something that causes us more, more problems, because once you give it, it's hard to take it back.
Have we done any projections on, on staff going out? On staff increases going out?
No, that's actually what we're, that's what we're starting with the budget process right now, is...
I mean, we even need it out probably past 2018, though.
Yeah, no, we probably, we need to, what we really need to do is a comprehensive study of our staffing, as well as our compensation plan and growth needs for staff as well. So, that's something that we plan on working. I would say we probably start that process by the beginning of August, so within the next several weeks, because we have to try, we really need to start anticipating what growth we're going to have in various departments, because we will, with the permit numbers that we're seeing continuing to come in, the commercial real estate or projects that are, that are occurring right now, we're going to start seeing a pretty decent growth curve on our staff.
Yeah, we've seen an uptick in interest, so I mean, just...
As well start going up over there.
Yeah.
That's one thing I've seen projections coming along here, if we add a lot more expense in and we start adding more people, that adding those people costs us a lot more dollars for every person we add, so while I'm going to take care of it, I'm going to be able to make sure, take care of everybody.
Does that give you enough direction on to get started? Okay?
Anyone else have anything on that? All right. With that, seeing no presentations or public hearing, move on to ordinances.
Mayor, bill number B seventeen dash twelve, ordinance amended section two four zero, code of ordinance of the city of Green Valley, Missouri, containing prohibited use skateboards in designated areas, city park proper, establishing an effective day of minimization. First reading, bill B seventeen dash twelve.
Mayor, I move we accept bill B seventeen dash twelve for its first reading, bring it back for second reading by title only.
I have motion Alderman Haley to approve bill B seventeen dash twelve for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just an update to the code of ordinances. Previously, the ordinance did not speak to scooters, skateboards, that sort of thing, and so, we had a growing problem with skateboarders over in the pavilion and on some of our park equipment that was causing damage. I will let Chief Starbuck answer any questions, or Shannon Davies answer any questions specific to the changes in the ordinances, but just know that that is, that is what we included, was the use of skateboards, and added that into this.
Is this including on main streets?
Um, does this include on sidewalks?
I think the way it's written, it was any places, it is posted, certainly, no skateboarding, I know they already have signs out there, and so, that was an anticipation, it's posted, I believe, on this ordinance.
Well, you need to have women's post office backed by the, where the truck pulls up, believe it or not.
Well, that would be private property, though, they would have to do that, right?
Then they have to do it, okay? Because I caught some kids out skateboarding and flying off the thing, and I said, so when, whenever you hit your head on the set, what are you guys going to do? Take off running?
Yeah, post office would have to post that, and then charge the trespassing, I guess. Off the subject a little bit, but this made me think of it. Rob had a meeting with...
I know skateboarding, yeah.
I know, but...
Going back to our, our, our...
Apparently, at some point, we were, when they did a lot of the donations for the pavilion and all that, some of the businesses that did that back there, there was supposed to be a plaque recognizing certain people. I was not aware of that, and it was brought up to Rob on his business meetings, that they were still waiting for their plaque at the pavilion. Doesn't even have any knowledge of a...
Who, who were the individuals?
Well, that would be A and A elect for, right?
It was the friends of the fair.
Friends of the park.
It was the first ever fair board or committee that bought the pavilion, paid for the building of the pavilion so they could have...
Yeah, the original fair committee.
That, that, that right there, Mike's got it.
Yeah, it ran to about, from about the nineteen ninety to about nineteen, about two thousand and one, and then the chamber kind of took it over, and...
And they gave funds for that, I mean, when they...
Yeah, well, the people, well, the people who ran it had materials left over, and I think part of the chamber got some of it, and then, yeah, the people, they had funds, old funds many years ago, and they took those funds and some other donations and put the pavilion up.
I mean, can we do some digging?
Uh, CJ, CJ would be your person.
My thing is, I don't want people who donated stuff and never got recognized, because apparently it's still in some people's minds that they never got recognized, so I don't want them to think we purposely did it. I just don't think any of us were aware of it. I mean, I wasn't, you know, I mean, can you, you know, talk to a good person and do some digging, Shannon, and see if he can come up with...
Yeah, CJ, which, which, one of the presidents...
I hate to not have people recognized for something they did, I mean, did, I know it's off subject, but definitely think of skateboards, we're going, all right, back to the skateboard. Anybody have any questions on skateboarders?
This came about, basically, as Davies was telling, you know, the only problem running.
Tearing the picnic tables up, right?
Actually, a sign that's been posted back there on the pavilion for a long time says, no skateboarding, and their ordinance before you said, oh, if you rehead it, there's a hundred and forty skateboard, and it's a fine...
And they grind on the side of the concrete stages and tear the, tear the concrete up.
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of damage out there. They'll connect picnic tables and run off one stage across picnic tables onto the other stage.
They'll stack picnic tables, too, something like that.
They'll stack, and they'll put their wheels on the side of the building, which will more up to the side of the building, and it's starting to become more and more problematic and costly. And so, the hope is, is by including skateboards or rollerboards, roller skates, things of that nature, we in essence now have something that officers can actually cite individuals on, perhaps even in the youth ward, that's the age, and possibly give community service hours, so we have lots of community service hours we can give these kids, give parks and...
Anything else?
I wouldn't, not necessarily against it or whatever, but the, did we put the video system out there to be able to watch that?
Yeah.
And with that, wouldn't we be able to cite them for vandalism and damaging our property just as easy?
Realistically, video systems are good, trying to specifically positively identify somebody that's moving around in a park setting and so forth, that gets really difficult. And then, that also takes a lot of time, I got to sit there and then watch hours, and there, what did this specific damage happen? And our camera system, well, it's great to have, but it doesn't have really the ability to be able to really zoom in and identify descriptors, and kind of get an overall picture, but it, yeah, it can be difficult to identify hair color, depending on where they're at in the pavilion, how much sunlight is around, or if it's at nighttime, and really pinpoint, you know, if somebody busted a plank on a picnic table, which would be a kid that's the one that did it.
How are we going to enforce this if we can't do, do the video, how are we going to, is this piece of legislation going to be enforced?
People, police, we camera all the time. Yeah, we might make contact with them. Nine times out of ten, when park staff makes contact with them, whatever we say goes in one ear and out the other, and so, then we, in essence, we have to call the police, and the police will come out, you know, and make contact with kids.
I think the issue may be... But maybe what I may be hearing from Alderman Arnold, I think the issue is, is currently, if we see somebody over there riding their skateboard, unless they've actually physically damaged the property, then, then we can't do anything. If we caught somebody and they damaged property, broke a park bench or something, then we could do a property damage charge against them, but by having this, this law, we'll be able to, if somebody's in there, they've, and they're just, you know, riding their skateboard through the pavilion or on the park benches, whatever the case may be, that in and of itself is the charge that we would file.
It's kind of a fine edge, because, you know, we talked about kids don't get outside and doing enough exercise as it is, and you start legislating away all the things they can do, and I know we're trying to keep them from doing the bad things here, but, you know, I remember a while back that we passed an ordinance before I got on the board about limiting like scooters and bicycles and anything off the sidewalks and so forth. It was like, where you want the kids to ride their bicycles and stuff? And so, it's one of those things, I don't want us going up more roadblocks so the child can't get out and play in their community.
And we do have a designated skating park.
And I understand that, because it's just right across the parking lot.
Right across the parking lot. And our, I use trails as well, and I'm talking sidewalks, but our actual recreational trails, skateboarding and rollerblading and bicycling, running, jogging will all be allowed, and it is a butterfly trail right now. What we're trying to pass here really isn't uncommon in the parks and recreation field. Anywhere you've got elevated stairs or stages or steps and picnic tables is where in essence you have problems, and that's really what this addresses, is our building and our shelters. Our loop around Armstrong Park, they're more than welcome to ride, as well as the designated skate park itself. But not only is it a damage issue, but it's really a safety issue, too. Obviously, the pavilion's not designed for the skateboarder, it's designed for party rentals and picnics and things like that, and we've had some injuries out there as well by the skateboarders by using those stages and steps and so...
All right. You have anything else? Seeing none, off air, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Six zero first. Bill B seventeen dash thirteen, first reading, an ordinance, city of Green Valley, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials. First reading, bill B seventeen dash thirteen.
First reading, Bill B seventeen dash thirteen.
May I move that we accept Bill B seventeen dash Saint thirteen for its first reading and bring it back by title only for its second reading?
I have motion Alderman West to approve Bill B seventeen dash thirteen for its first reading, bring it back by title only for its second reading. Private second. Second on the Arnold, any discussion? Mister Mayor, members of the board, uh, every two years, the city's required to pass, uh, an ordinance that delegates who is required to, uh, file a personal financial disclosure, disclosure of PFD through the Missouri Ethics Commission. Um, Ms. Ozinbaugh, this last year, over here, I pointed down at the staff table, um, was going through and doing research, and she noticed that every two years we've passed it as a resolution. The state statute actually says that it should be an ordinance, and so, one, that is, that is why this is coming to you, uh, tonight, but also, it has to be passed every two years. And what this ordinance states is that you will, uh, disclose your, uh, financial interests that you have that intersect with the city by May first of each year. If you have any additional questions, I'll be happy to ask, answer them, or Theresa can as well.
You have any questions? Alright.
All those fair seats say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero first. Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-five, resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, reappointing Bob Demmett to the Green Valley Planning and Zoning Commission for a two-year term. Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-five.
May I move that we accept and approve Resolution seventeen dash twenty-five?
I have motion Alderman Arnold to approve Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-five. Do I have a second? Second on the Hezlys, any discussion? Mayor, members of the board, this is just what it says, uh, it's a reappointment of Mister Demmett to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who has served on, uh, that commission for several terms now. Any questions, Mister Murphy can answer them.
Any questions?
I wish he would've been here tonight.
Yeah, he couldn't make it tonight. Yes, sir, I think this will be his fourth term, so he has, uh, a good, uh, member that we could count on being at the meetings and participate.
All fair seats say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Six zero, Mayor. Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-six is a resolution by the Board of Alderman, City of Green Valley, Missouri, approving the second of three annual payments to the Green Valley Partnership, for the three-year cooperative between the city and the Green Valley Partnership, formerly, formerly known as the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation. Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-six.
May I move that we accept, uh, Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-six?
I have motion Alderman West to approve Resolution R seventeen dash twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Beaman, any discussion? Mister Mayor, members of the board, um, as I stated, whenever we amended the agenda earlier this evening, uh, this is just for the second payment of a three-year, uh, commitment that the city has to the, um, partnership, formerly the Green Valley Economic Development Corporation. And in that, uh, agreement, it was, it was approved in March of twenty sixteen, and it called for three payments of thirty-five thousand dollars, one each year. During budget discussions, uh, there was some discussion about the Chamber of Commerce getting some, some funding, and that was in the form of, on your budget, if you recall, I think it said Green Valley Info Line, and they were gonna try to do some, uh, some sort of hotline for, uh, Green Valley businesses or people that call and want information about Green Valley. Um, so that line item had an additional sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, at the time, the, uh, the direction of the board was to include that into the budget, but, uh, do not expense it, and we had to come up with a plan for the Chamber to be able to use, uh, or to be able to get that funding. Uh, fast forward to today, um, we received an invoice from the, uh, partnership for fifty-one thousand dollars. Uh, I started to expense the thirty-five thousand against the line item that we have in the budget, uh, and began the process of a purchase order, but then, going back and looking at it, we realized we probably shouldn't have the board approve this thirty-five thousand dollar expenditure. Um, and then in addition, rather than, uh, just automatically incorporate that sixteen thousand, and, uh, I thought that I would leave that to the discretion of the board and have this resolution, uh, tonight be for thirty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, with all of that information, I, I hated to drop this on you this evening without letting you research it some more, but the thirty-five thousand dollar piece of this is just more of a housekeeping, a commitment that you've already made during budget, um, so there's not much of a decision to be there, other than to authorize the expense. Uh, where we need your discretion is in the discussion about the additional sixteen thousand dollars, which Mister Harrington, uh, is here to, uh, talk, and I'm sure that, Rob, if you'd like to come up and answer any questions, um, the board can make the decision as to whether we're going to give that sixteen thousand extra now, or, uh, just do the thirty-five thousand and withhold the sixteen till a future date.
So, any question? So, um, I believe it was in December or November that, at that time, the Director of the Chamber, James Spicer, asked for the sixteen thousand dollars from the, the board here, and I, I wanna catch you up to date. At that time, we were having discussions about the Economic Development Group and the, the Chamber becoming one entity, which is now the partnership. There were some concerns of some business owners, um, and some of my investors about, you know, two, two entities working for the same goal, but trying to pull separate monies. And so, since then, we have created the partnership. We are still currently working with, uh, Mister Rome on paperwork, with IRS and, and the State of Missouri, but that's coming along. Where I would say, uh, what I would say to sixteen thousand, and, and, and instead of an info line, in my opinion, what we have found in, through our research, is the website that the Chamber currently had, has, um, it is still up and running, but what we found out, uh, was a couple of things. One, um, it was, um, unable to be converted to a mobile device, which we all know, websites have to be converted to a mobile device now. Many people look for those on their phones and their tablets. Secondly, um, it was corrupted, so there was no firewall that had been up to date, kept up to date, therefore, uh, any hacker or anybody wanting to spam, anyone who went to the site could very easily. There was nothing keeping that from happening. And so, and that was because the updates hadn't been done properly over the years. I believe the site was built, I think, in eleven, two thousand and eleven, or something like that. So, over the six years of its existence, it hadn't been updated, uh, with the software it needed to keep it secure and safe for, uh, our businesses and, and investors and, everyone to use. So with all those things, we were unable to use the Chamber's website and even rehash it to be the partnership website. So with the help of Kansas City Power and Light, um, we are going to take on the expenditure of rebuilding a new website from scratch. It's gonna be the partnership website. It's gonna have, um, Chamber of Commerce, um, sides to it, economic development sides to it. It's gonna be an all-in-one website. It's gonna be something our local businesses can use to talk to each other, uh, find out about networking opportunities or just local news, but it's also gonna be an opportunity for us to reach out to site selecting, locate, uh, site selectors, uh, developers across the United States to bring those entities to Green Valley. Um, and so, a big chunk of that, sixteen thousand, will be used for that website. Other things, um, as, uh, was asked before, was that the info line is gonna take a huge chunk of that money. I believe a lot of that money would probably have been used to keep the Chamber going as well, and, and, and keep salaries and the lights on. We have that currently under control, and so another portion of that sixteen thousand will be used to really, um, market Green Valley. Um, it is very expensive to market. It's very expensive to go see site selectors or attend events that site selectors do attend locally, um, and it, it's because they're expensive to have come, um, to local, um, communities. Uh, we just did something with KCADC, uh, over a three-day period, they brought in six site selectors. It cost every community a thousand dollars. Um, and then they take that money and they pay these site selectors to come in and for their time. We did something at the lake with site selectors that cost us fifteen hundred dollars. There are other opportunities we could take advantage of, in partnering with the state and the local group KCADC. The problem is, is the funds. If, if we choose to market and, and go in that direction, then some other things we're not gonna be able to do. Um, and, and so we really wanna be there for our local businesses that are already here to help them grow, which we have several, um, that we've already started conversations with, but we also wanna be able to reach out to those that aren't here already and tell them that Green Valley is the place that they can come and grow and be a part of the community. So, that sixteen thousand dollars will be used for a lot of those two things. One of some of the concerns that were brought up back when, um, the sixteen thousand dollars were asked for was budgets, oversight of the dollars. So where I can say that, obviously, we have a budget, uh, it's, uh, that is looked over at every meeting. Ryan is our treasurer, so he has constant eyes on the budget, but we have also reached out, and we have a third-party CPA that's overseeing our budget as well. So we have several eyes that get to look at that money, those monies and those dollars that come from you and everyone else before they're spent or after they're spent, so there is that, there is, um, accountability on our part. Myself, Ryan, and, uh, Scott Forrester's CPA group, they're all gonna be able to see that, reconcile it, and be able to report back how the money is being used. And I feel like we have a great system in place. QuickBooks is a fun thing to learn, and we've kinda been learning as we go, but, uh, now with Scott Forrester, he has, um, somebody on that he is, um, offering these services to us, um, pro bono, I guess you would say, um, based on just we're offering him a membership in return, but, uh, he's gonna, they'd be those third eyes that, that don't have, that has no connection to our board or this entity, that can really look at it and be able to say, hey, this isn't correct, or this is correct. And so, we've, we've, I feel like we've went beyond what, um, was asked for before, and we are doing that already, and so that's why I'm coming back and asking that, uh, to increase not only the thirty-five thousand, which we thank you for again, uh, but ask for the extra sixteen thousand to improve our organization, um, and, uh, do some of those marketing and, uh, website and other improvements that, uh, are vital to the growth of this community, so. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Can I ask you a real silly one?
No, there's just saying that this is a...
How many of the businesses have you gone in and actually talked to the business person?
Well, we're in the process of doing that. Um, my newest, uh, contract with the entities requires me to go into at least five a month and sit down and do what we call, it's a business survey. So it's a series of questions that I ask that basically gives the city, my organization, the fire department, the school district, a grade card, a report card, and so we're able to tally those answers at the end of those. So that will be sixty-two, sixty-five, anyway, uh, number of businesses that we'll see, um, throughout the rest of the year, and at the end, we'll be able to tally those and we'll be able to find out what are the key problems of those businesses in growth. So whether it be, uh, workers, the availability of good work, workers, well, it be, and I'm just saying this, I've not had anybody say anything about water rates, but I'm just, if, whether it be water rates, fire protection, police protection, whatever that should be, we will be able to say, out of the sixty-plus, um, companies that we interviewed, thirty percent say that they're concerned with taxes. And so we'll be able to pinpoint what the larger, um, problems are for those businesses to grow. So we are going in and seeing those. Um, last year, we, we met with several local businesses, and we are currently meeting with four or five that are in town, um, a couple that probably most of you don't know about, but, um, uh, they are expanding their operations as we speak, and we're working with them and finding them locations to where they can be more, um, open to better warehousing, better shipping, and a better retail location, so.
One of the things I've been told, 'cause I do go around, imagine me talking, but, they can advertise close to the street on several locations.
Well, that's in Mister Murphy's...
You're talking about off-perma signs?
Well, like, uh, the...
Don't can.
barbecue place was, they can't, that's not an mall, you can't put a sign out for advertising. And, uh, down by, uh, Posidio's, you don't see a sign out for advertisement.
So with the Posidio's, I believe that's, uh, David Warren owns that property, and it, and so that I would be, I, I would believe that's probably an agreement at Posidio's, and Mister Ward would have to work out with, with signage. But when it comes to signing permits and stuff, the master's at that table, and so, uh, he knows all the answers.
Go get him and haul his stuff down.
Whatever you'd like to do with him, Alderman Todd, and that's... But, uh, we...
Well, do you know that was one, that lady won an award on national TV?
Yes, I do, I was...
And if you got some gusto to you, try the barbecue beef pizza with pickle.
Correct.
Jim Blaine dared me to try him, and I could kick him in the shins if he was here, 'cause that's the one I liked.
So, yeah, but, I've been in there, good pizza.
Yes, best.
Yes, Alderman Hezly.
Common question, I guess, what, uh, how much, how much money is KCPNL fronting you for this, or is this a match to the sixteen, or what?
Sure. Um, so KCPNL, uh, originally gave twenty-five hundred dollars to her, as an investment to her organization. They have what's called a partnership, uh, plan, or where they help local communities throughout their, um, service area with things like going to training or things. And, and so our part was the, um, website, so they're giving forty-five hundred dollars for the, the, um, website, and our match is, my part of that's gonna be five thousand. The total cost of the website is ninety-five hundred dollars. It was brought up at our board, and I will say this, we did look local, um, for a local person to do, to match what we were going to get with, um, that type of site. Uh, if we would've used local, uh, since the gentleman we are using is a preferred provider to KCPNL, they'll only use him for their forty-five hundred dollar match. So we were having to find somebody local that would provide everything he would provide, uh, to basically give us the same quality website that we're gonna get with this gentleman, um, and through KCPNL for five thousand dollars, and we were told there's, there's no way that the local person could, could provide that service. Um, so, uh, with that being said, my board had voted before that, as long as I went local, that I have the right to spend up to five thousand dollars on a website, and that's what we did. We, I went ahead and signed the agreement. We started with, uh, they have a template they're laying out currently. Um, the contract says, within twelve weeks, ten to twelve weeks, we'll have a finished product. Uh, that's based on how fast I get material to them as well, and how fast I can get material into me that I need to pass on to him, so, but we're, we're, I'm working very hard to try to make sure that, that happens. It's just, we, in my office right now, we're trying to prioritize things because it is myself and only me in the office, and so I'm trying to prioritize things and do things that, um, obviously we have to do, and so...
And then my, my comment would be around, based on the history of the city giving money or, uh, allocating money towards the Chamber. And the history of several instances of commitments made and not kept. Is there, is, is your board, and, and is your board willing to draft a memorandum of understanding with commitments, timelines, everything else? I'm not averse to saying yes to the fifteen thousand, but I would like to see commitments that protect, protect the city and provide everything that both parties would be...
Sure. So, um, answering that, um, and I, I, since you're sitting up there, I can, I'll go ahead and answer this, but, um, as you know, several members of this entity and the city do sit on my Board of Directors, and I believe that, um, my latest... on my Board of Directors. And I believe that my latest contract and the expectations that were set for me in that contract reflect on what is best for the city and the monies that you give. And that's making sure that I'm in current businesses, working with them, doing business retention and expansion, and talking to them about how we can keep their businesses in Green Valley, grow them here in Green Valley, which produces more tax dollars and gives back to the community, but also making sure that I'm doing the economic development side, which is marketing and going out and making sure that I'm reaching and out and having contact and touches with individuals that could bring in new business that also will increase the tax dollars, will therefore benefit the city. Alderman Headley, it is in, I say this because I truly feel this. It is my hope that at some point down the road, that our entity is such a large entity, self-sustaining entity, that I will not have to come back and ask for money from you. That it would, your membership will be just like every other investment membership to where you give the same amount as any other business does, and we're able to do what we do without having to come back and get public dollars for those. Because I understand you, you are accountable to those dollars, to the taxpayers. But what my job is, and I feel my job is, is to take those dollars and do the best thing I can, which is bring the services and bring the job opportunities to the citizens of this community, and therefore grow ourselves to make that sustainable to where we don't have to use public dollars anymore. So that's my goal. That's my hope. Will it happen overnight? Of course not. It will not. But as long as we continue to do what we have been doing, I feel that we've been very successful in this last year. Many of you know the project that we've worked and the projects that we've worked and discussed as a board, very large projects that we've been a part of. And I do, I do believe that some more of those are coming down the pipe, that we are setting ourselves up to work and be successful with, or at least competitive with. So, so with a long answer to your short question, but I believe that those accountabilities have been set up in my, at least my requirements in my contract to, that will help and, I guess, hold me accountable to the dollars I get from not just the city, but from the other investors and members as well.
I think we need to have some sort of...
Sure.
I mean, we have, we have it for the thirty-five. I mean, I think the question is regarding sixteen, probably, correct? So, I mean, is anyone against the thirty-five? I always, I mean...
Can I make a statement real quick? And Rob, this is something I apologize. Do you want to, do you want me to give up the floor? You can ask your question first, because I know you had a question and you had a statement.
I have, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Who, and possibly it's going to be you, but who is going to be responsible to make sure that this installment is going to get used by the people that it's supposed to be helping, unlike what happened in the past?
Well, Yolanda, I would, I would say, I guess, the buck ultimately stops with me. I mean, because, you know, I'm the one out there traveling, I'm the one out there spending those dollars and making sure that we're using them properly. And so I guess if you or anyone else in this community wanted to come up and ask me the question, I could, it should be me who says, oh, I can tell you what we've done with that money. So I would say ultimately probably myself, but, and I don't want to throw this on the back of the board either, but every board member around that table as well. I mean, because I can't spend, I could spend money, but at some point in time, I'm going to be sitting at a table with you and the other board members, and they're going to be able to see that expenditures. And I should be ultimately responsible of telling you and everyone else why I spent that, where I spent it, how I spent it. And so I would, the answer to your question would be, I believe me, which should be.
It's not so much the money. It's that they had the product once, it was available to all of the people that belonged to the chamber at that point in time, and yet it never got off the block.
And that could have happened for several reasons. I'm not here to cast blame on anyone in the past or say why it wasn't done correctly or how members of the board felt at that time it should be done. But what I'm here to do is to say that as long, it is my, it is my word to you as the board and hope that we, we have proved ourselves so far to this point, that we are here for the community to help grow and help local businesses that are already here grow. But our hope that we will continue to do that and prove ourselves to you, whether it be myself to the Board of Directors at my board meetings, or whether it be myself coming up here once a quarter, every, every board meeting and being here for your questions. I'm willing to do whatever it takes. But we have a great opportunity in Green Valley right now, because I get to see all the stuff that I'm working on that other people don't, and because of confidentiality and things like that. And there are a lot of great things happening right now, conversations at least, and that could result in some really great things happening by the end of this year or beginning of next year. But we just have to continue. We have to continue to have those conversations. We have to continue to fight the fight, because our neighbors aren't stopping, and so we shouldn't either. So that's, that's just me.
Okay. So you know that I'm a big fan of the board.
Yeah, you're, you're the head of it.
What I'm about to say is may come across a little different than what you want me to say, but I feel like the merger right now is still open. We are, we don't have an official partnership yet.
Not, not, not on paper.
Right. So my opinion right now is that we approve the main thirty-five thousand. This is what I'm going to suggest, in that we re-approach the sixteen thousand, which I'm a hundred percent behind, but that we re-approach that when that gets put in place.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm going to, that's my opinion.
But did I understand that part of that sixteen was needed for the website development?
So in our, in our budget, when we did our budget, we did not budget for a five thousand dollar expenditure for a website, because we, we were told and we went into the merger or the understanding that the site that the chamber had would be able to be redone to be a website, which would have been at a much lower cost to us. After the security issues and everything, talking with the gentleman who built the site, it just wasn't, that was not a possibility at all. It would have cost more to change over that site that the chamber had than it would be just to rebuild a new one. And so that's where the, the extra, we had to make a decision. And in this day and age, we can send out a lot of marketing material. We can mail it all day long. It just doesn't do this as good as a website. Because I will tell you, eight out of ten site selectors, when they're working a project, they're going to look at my website before I even knew they were interested in Green Valley. And if we don't have a website that's up to date with easy access to the information they need, such as taxes, water rates and those things, possible locations that they can come to, it's, we're done. So we're already sitting at a disadvantage with eight out of ten. And it's hard enough to land the big one, but if you put yourself at that type of disadvantage, it's almost virtually impossible. Now, one thing good we have going to us is a lot of our leads do go through Kansas City, KCADC. And so they go to KCADC first and then come to us. But just to me, I would like to be able to bring our own leads in as well and not be relying on someone else. Because if we bring them in and KCADC helps us, then we don't have to share those leads with Blue Springs, Oak Grove, Lee Summit, or anyone. When KCADC brings a lead in, and it's happened a few times in this last year, everyone sees it, and then KCADC kind of picks which is the best location. And then sometimes we get a call, an email, sometimes we don't. Now, that's fine. That's how it should be, because we don't match the requirements that the company wants. But it would be nice to be able to go out and get our own, our own sites, our own locators, and bring them in and do our own type of marketing on top of what we do with KCADC, the Missouri Partnership, Eastern Jackson County Development, and others. So, yes, the website, the sixteen thousand would help us on our budget side come up with the, with the funds to...
I mean, we give you the thirty-five now, though. You can take the five out of that. And that should get you, because, I mean, I don't know how long off you're off on the merger, making it official, but that, you should have some budget relief without the other employee there for a time being also.
We do. And so I, the, last year when, when we established, so your thirty-five and the five thousand from Central Jackson County and the five thousand from the school district was actually done to pay my salary. Those three things made up what my salary was. And when I first came here, that's how it kind of was explained. That's why it was a three-year, a three-year agreement between those three entities, because that way they knew that at least that base forty-five thousand dollar salary would be there. And then whatever we raised in investments afterwards would, would be able to help with, with the other expenditures of the, of this organization. Now, with that being said, we did have a budget of my salary of, that we didn't go with. So there is some, some play there with dollars that we're able to take and shoot off into, to the website. And then we have made some other, we've had some individuals invest in organization that we didn't know or didn't plan on investing in organization. So there are some play of dollars there. But my intent is if we get the sixteen thousand is that will help us bridge that gap of, in marketing, that may be there currently, that maybe we were counting on but not counting on. I mean, to be in full honest opinion, when we budgeted, when we did our budget, we budgeted for fifty, how much was it, Ryan? Fifty-one? Fifty-one or fifty?
Fifty-one from the city?
Yeah. In our budget, it was budgeted at fifty-one, because we, we did count the sixteen thousand. But it was one of those things that if we got it, we got it. If we didn't, but I, I like...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you, so I don't think we're counting on it for cash flow. It was nice.
It was going to be a bonus.
Being added bonus, essentially, yeah.
But, and then, but again, we weren't counting on spending five thousand for a website at that time either. So we've had some expenditures come up that we didn't count on. So there were some expenses from the chamber that we had to pay as well that I didn't count on, such as CPA payments and stuff. Yes, yes, Ms. Wood.
I think on the positive side, though, you just had the fireworks tent.
We did.
Coming from that. And you still have two major chamber-related fundraisers, one being the fair.
Yeah.
The other being the...
We're going to try to do a golf tournament this year.
Tournament.
Yes, ma'am. So those would be great.
Coming up, and the fair, I mean, fireworks is already done.
Yes.
So there is some additional cash flow.
And we, we actually, we actually, I believe, placed those within our budget as bringing money in, those three items. And whether we meet where we budgeted, I think we budgeted low on all those. So I think we'll meet and go past what we, we budgeted on those incomes. But you're right. We do have some, we just finished the fireworks. We'll probably be somewhere close to eight thousand dollars or a little more this year. And then we do have the fair coming up, where we'll be doing the beer garden, extra cash there. And then we are going to have a golf tournament this year that we think will be cash positive.
Rob, maybe, maybe a better way of my statement should have asked, in the budget right now, in the, in the bank account right now, are you, are you giving, do you have enough money to maintain the budget as we move forward until we get the partnership finalized and actually in place?
Um, yes, I would say we do. I, I, as long, yes, as long as we don't have any huge expenditure come up, that...
My point is not that I'm not in favor of the funding that you're asking for, for that.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, I just think that as long as you have enough money in the budget or enough money in the accounts right now to hold you over until that gets done, that I think it would be better for us to do it when we have the physical thing put together and we have a finalized partnership. That would be my recommendation.
How far out are we looking to have that finalized?
Well, currently, Kim Rome, our attorney, has that documentation. And we've reached out a couple of times and with, and with, Mr. Rome's been very busy. We don't pay him, so he does have paying clients that he has to work for. And so he has been working. He had some time off that he had to take due to some personal issues, but he's back and he's working on that. But with the announcement, and I won't take his thunder, but there was an announcement made today at the Assistance Council meeting that kind, might throw that off a little bit. But we're going to reach out and see how that's going to work from now. But he's working on it. And when that'll be finished, I am not all, I'm not completely aware, so.
One last question. It's the logo discussion that we had.
I'm going to walk away.
Is that, is that tied to the development of the website? I'm sure you're talking about this.
We, we have a logo that will be used on our website. It's the logo that we currently use. If Mr. Arnold starts picking up hard objects, let me know. I'll duck behind this. But in all due respect, we have not had that discussion since that evening about the logo here. But I, we will be using, the economic developer always has cards. So we'll be using this logo in our, on our website. So the logo we've been using since the EDC started a year ago. So that's the logo we will use.
Is that your phone number card?
It is, it is.
Give it to me, so when I get busy, I'll keep calling you. Thank you.
Yes, I just thought everybody had my card, but...
Can't wait to pass.
The lo, but, and the logo stuff was done for free by KCADC, so we have all the logos. They sent all the information they did for us, so.
You have any questions, Mr. Rob? Well, we do have a motion in a second on the original resolution, which is for the thirty-five thousand. So unless someone is wanting to amend, amend the motion to add the additional sixteen thousand, we'll be voting on thirty-five.
Okay. Any additional discussion then?
So we'll be voting on the thirty-five then. All in Ferris, you say aye?
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Six zero, Mayor.
Next up, city attorney's reports.
Nothing to report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Next up, city administrative staff reports.
I'll start with Mr. Murphy.
Uh, Mayor and Board, I just had one thing. At, no, at one of the last meetings, Sarah Neto had talked to you about doing the, we had a student, the Green Valley School District, him and his mother went and got funding for a free mini library, and they asked us to house that library. So it's actually going to be in front of City Hall here, and the grand opening for it is going to be before the next board meeting. So July 24th at six o'clock, we'll have the, the library up. I would like for any of you that could attend to be there. The young man and his mother will be there. They're actually going to set up with a table at four thirty as like a book drive to get the, the library started. But it'd be kind of a cool thing. We've got the library here. We've got it painted, and we'll have it up and ready to go for the 24th. and we'll have it up and ready to go for the twenty-fourth.
Um, Sarah would be a, a good contact.
I'll get Sarah.
I can get her.
Mr. V.
Uh, Mayor and Board, just a couple of quick items. Uh, our spring baseball and softball season concluded this last week in June. Um, all in all, it went, went pretty well. Uh, the weather cooperated for the most part as far as, as rainouts were concerned. Um, I know this was included in your, uh, alderman report, but we had a little over five hundred kids registered between girls softball and boys baseball. Um, I think that made up forty-seven teams total. I think among all of the Green Valley teams, we played four hundred and sixty-five games, uh, uh, this spring. So, uh, a, a long season and, and we were able to, to get through it and that, uh, for the most part, everything that we, we've received's been positive and, and we're now looking forward and moving towards the fall, uh, boys baseball and girls softball season. And hoping to have information out on that next week. Uh, the other thing I had is, uh, this is the last year of a three-year contract with Midwest Pool Management, uh, is, who's currently the firm that we're contracted with for pool management services at our Green Valley Aquatic Center, uh, this week, we're going out for bid, uh, for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty pool seasons. So, hopefully here in about a, oh, three or four weeks, we'll have bids back and we'll have that information to provide, uh, to, to all of you for the future pool seasons. That's all that I have.
Can I just ask you a question on, on the comparison for baseball, for the, the fall season? Compared this to last season, did we have growth, did it stay the same, did we have a new vaccine?
Um, I, I think we had a little bit of a growth. I believe last spring, there was forty-four teams, uh, we had forty-seven. Um, I, I think from an individual participation standpoint, we were a little, a little higher, um, than last year, so.
Was it, was it, was it profitable, or did we lose money on that?
No, I mean, we set our registration fees so that we do make money now, albeit it's not a, a great amount of money. We reduced, uh, what we charged our, our youth here from what the former entity charged here in this community. Um, and, and for the most part, we felt like we offered a pretty equivalent, uh, program for both boys and girls that was, uh, more affordable and in line with a lot of what the surrounding communities charge.
Mr. Arroyo.
Hey, hey, I'm a-
Oh, sorry.
Chan, uh, I understand a new group is forming to, to take care of the football program?
Yes.
Have, have, we've been following up on that to see how that's going and what effect it's gonna have on us and the program?
Yeah, we, we've actually met with the Green Valley Sports League a, a couple of times, um, and they, uh, then they were at our last park board meeting, um, and was present to kind of give a presentation on, on their plans and, and what they, they plan to do as regarding youth football, um, this upcoming football season. And right now, we are working through a facility use agreement, uh, with them for usage of the football field complex. Um, and I think our hope is to also provide, uh, youth basketball here in the community as well. So, again, it's still, everything's still kinda in motion here, but, but we plan on having an agreement in place for the upcoming football season.
Before we guarantee the comm-?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Board, tomorrow, we're actually having our community development event. Um, as you recall, we had it scheduled about a week and a half ago, unfortunately. Um, we, we did say it would be rain or shine, unfortunately, there was a threat of severe weather with some tornadoes and hail, and we chose not to take that chance. So, we will be here tomorrow, uh, between five and seven, out here at Armstrong Park. And we have a lot of things for the kids to do, as well as some giveaways and, um, hot dogs and cookies and water, so if you have an opportunity, come out and, and enjoy it.
All right, and Chief Starbuck.
Uh, Mayor and Board, you probably see within the next week or so, folks are gonna be in front of City Hall and get a large green sign that says, "We have a spot." We need to be in, uh, sent out and, uh, make available law enforcement agencies around the country. And this is, is a organized effort, uh, because of the big increase in online, uh, commercial transactions, like Craigslist, where people go out and meet strangers and buy things. Uh, crimes have been, and aggression has increased, so there's more of a trend. They will use this on a, on a website that we have no involvement in, basically telling state locations. It allows a seller and buyer to agree how to meet you in front of City Hall in Green Valley and to be a location that's open and, uh, uh, under video surveillance and just adds air security, it's totally involved. So, uh, there's no cost to provide it for you and, you know, try, try to help the community in that way.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Next up, Alvin reports a comment, Alvin Arnold.
I have a couple of things, uh, for you, actually. On my road, I know my road and, uh, Ryan Road was, or, uh, part of my road was redeveloped. Uh, part of the plan was that Kirby Road was to be extended across Forty Highway. And I know when we moved and did away with Gini, where it came across, the state didn't wanna have a jagged intersection, so that's why we had to take Kirby out and they changed it to Long Drive or whatever, whatever. Um, I know there was not enough money left in the account, uh, the bond issue for that particular road to go up here, I know that's why the bridge and stuff was put in there. Uh, I'd like to find out exactly where we stand on the funding for that and what the cost would be to put Kirby Road on in across there. Uh, the access, I think would help with the, with the trails, there's another access point. It would also have, uh, a big impact, uh, impact on the remembrance park, uh, that they're putting in for the military, so it would be easier access, so people didn't have to walk a mile or better just to get over to see, to see the, the plaza. And, uh, but somewhere along the line, start making a plan on how we're gonna finish the commitment on that particular bond issue, put that road across there. I know past Alderman, Scotty was, was pretty adamant, he'd like to see that done. And, uh, I think also in my aspect, running with the fire department, anybody that's in between the New South Division on the north and a wider drive on the bottom, we've got a longer transport to get to the, to their needs when, when, when they call in and they close that road, this access was taken out, so. So, there's a number of reasons that I'd like to see that, uh, looked at and reviewed to see about what the opportunity will be to get that completed. I think it also would add to the possible, uh, ability to market the land that the city owns just to the north of the, the bike trails there, so that it gets developed to something else. You know, it could help out the city as well. So, I wouldn't look for anything at the next meeting, but the first meeting in August, to hear something back on that. Uh, second thing is, uh, over the last few years, we've had a number of complaints about people driving too fast at neighborhoods and stuff. Uh, we've attempted to deal with it with putting in, uh, the speed humps. Uh, some of the areas, the speed, speed hump has been, uh, used, people appreciate it, but it's gone for a season, you know, and gone. Uh, I've had a few people contacting me in reference to the issue again, and I'd like to have an ordinance drafted for two, possibly three stop signs. Uh, one would be to replace the sign that was taken down on Nelson at Leanne. There used to be a four-way stop there, you know, and, uh, the neighbor lady that lives right there at it is very adamant she'd like to see it put back, we see it too many. There's not another stop between BB and, uh, I think it's Meta, which is quite a long stretch. People just don't pay attention to how fast they're driving, so, um, controlling that flow by putting a stopping, I think would help that greatly. I know that you've probably taken this to the traffic committee, and, and/or your book that you have that follows doesn't recommend a stop sign there, but I feel like it, the safety exceeds the book. There's, there's a need for a stop sign there, and my people that I represent from that area want a stop sign, I think we oughta. It's, it's a lot cheaper to put, you know, two stop signs than it is to put in a speed hump and four signs and then take it back down at the end of the season. And it will take care of the problem here around from that point forward. The next two that I would like to consider, and they're not necessarily both, uh, on Montana Ridge, and I drove through there, and these are in fairly level spots, where you don't have to worry about, uh, traffic issues with the weather, because of being slick and stopping somebody on a hill. But either at Stockman in Montana Ridge or Hillsboro in Montana Ridge. That's another one, and from, all the way from Greystone all the way down to Snidewar, there's not a stop sign along there, and it's several blocks, where people don't pay attention to how fast they're driving. And both of those intersections have stop signs coming off the side streets, so it would, it would look normal with a four-way stop at those intersections. And again, I know you've, you've reviewed those, that's possibly not meeting the criteria by whatever book you followed, but, uh, we've had children that have gotten run over up there on Montana Ridge.
I mean, we'll, we'll certainly take a look at those, um, and I'll get with you afterwards and get all the specific locations. Again, I started writing some of them down, I think I missed a couple. Um, but yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll certainly look at those, um, a- and some of those we probably have looked at with the traffic committee as well, um-
I, I know they, they've come back on a couple of them, I've asked before, that it didn't recommend it by their study.
Correct.
But I, I feel that as an elected body to represent what my people in my area would like to see for the safety in their neighborhoods, that I, I, I think we need to have the stop signs put in.
I, I would. I mean, just going before we go forward with that, it suggests, you know, there are liability issues when you start putting in stop signs that aren't warranted. Um, you know, the issue of the speed hump as a device to actually control speeding has been talked about, and, you know, there's different options that can be done with those as opposed to a speed or a, a stop sign being used as some sort of speed control. Um, you know, so, we could certainly look at those thoughts.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make the point, I'm, I'm kinda done looking at them. I, I want an ordinance drafted so we can take care of the issues. But every year, we, we have people discuss the, the issue of people not slowing down in the neighborhoods, and these stopping, or stop sign halfway through there will, will at least cut their speed down.
I think one of the issues is that the MUTCD isn't just a guidebook, it's federal law. I mean, that's a federal law on traffic sign, sign usage. And so, one of the issues is when Rick, Rick does a traffic study, if it's not warranted based off of that, then we're actually going against the federal law for the usage of those stop signs. I don't know if, I-
I mean, I can't-
We've talked about this a lot, I agree. Uh, I don't know if, what sort of leverage you have or, or leniency you have with the MUTCD, um-
Like I said, we, we look at, we look at the speeds, we'll look at the traffic flows, you look at the accident rate over a three-year period, I believe. Um, but I mean, I, I'm gonna tell you, I can't recommend it if it doesn't meet the criteria. Um, I mean, obviously, the board can choose to do what they choose to do, but as a professional engineer, I couldn't recommend something that doesn't meet the warrants of the federal requirement. But, you know, but we could certainly always look at that, and there's other options, though, that I think we can look at for speed control, uh, that this board really probably hasn't looked at before. Some cities do do that, um, in, in the sense of permanent speed humps, but that's probably another discussion.
And it's a lot more expensive remedies than, than five hundred dollars with a stop sign.
It, it could be, but again, if it doesn't meet the warrants, then I can't approve that, or I can't recommend that.
Right, so Rick would have to draft an ordinance, and staff would be recommending against it. Now, the board could still approve the stop sign, because you are the legislative authority for, for the city. But as far as his license and registration as a professional engineer, um, he stands to be disciplined if he recommends against those federal guidelines. I think that's the point that he's trying to make here.
Okay.
Do we still have the, uh, digital thing that shows, uh, cars getting faster going?
Um, yeah, we s- uh, we don't have a speed sign anymore.
No, we need to, one of the other ones, um, has, goes-
Yeah, breaking down all the time.
Have a smaller one, you attach to the sign, and always gets knocked down and damaged. It's probably gonna be-
Well, I'm kind of naughty, uh, I suggested that there was a camera in there. It took the speed down considerably, but, uh, it's terrible when you have to sit and tell the white lies to people to get them to listen.
Alvin Cotton?
I'm done with cotton.
Hmm?
Nothing's cotton.
Okay. Alvin Coleman?
Would be a good thing.
Alvin Headley?
Alvin's just fine.
Alvin West?
Yes, actually, I have one thing that came up this morning at another meeting. And I know that we talked about it several months ago with regards to the Oats Program and the possible need in the community for some type of, um, things such as the Oats Program.
Yes.
At the Green Valley Assistance Council this morning, it was brought up again that maybe the Assistance Council should start some low-cost, um, rides for citizens in the Green Valley, uh, community. So, I'm asking, what was the outcome of the, the one that we had talked about several months ago? With regards to Oats?
Hmm? Yeah, it's actually still ongoing. Um, one of the things we did is Ryan and myself met with, um, the KCATA, um, and they were the ones that put together that online survey. And we should be getting the results back on that, but part of that goal was to see what people, like what their desire was, what they would use some sort of, uh, transportation like that for. Um, in addition to that, um, we also go to committee meetings through Truman Heartland that has all the, uh, communities from Eastern Jackson County, um, and are, and actually the woman who heads up Oats, uh, attends those as well. We're looking at actually maybe putting together a joint, uh, application for, it's called the fifty-three-ten program, but it's a federal, um, grant, and that cycle will be in two thousand and eighteen, um, to do something to kind of up our, um, the access we, our residents would have with the program by partnering with Blue Springs and some of the other communities that are around to where it would be more of a split cost. Um, 'cause right now, you know, like, everybody's kind of on their own with it, like Blue Springs does a few days a week, Lee Summit, um, is, they're actually just, a month ago, started kind of a new program, um, with Oats to see if that works. They've been bouncing back and forth between using Oats and using KCATA, but kind of all those things are still going on right now. Um, so out in the next probably month or two at least, we should have an idea of which direction we're gonna go, and we'll come back to the board with that.
The plan was to try and get some sort of program put together, uh, based off the survey results that we have. We do have funding for an Oats Program for this year, and, uh, based off of the, uh, fifty-three-ten funding that we're gonna be putting in for, we're gonna budget additional funding in two thousand and eighteen to expand whatever we come up with at the end of this year.
What, what is the per trip cost with Oats?
Um, it's subsidized by different cities, I know Blue Springs has-
Yeah, it's all a little bit different, um, and the cost of Oats, basically, it's up to each community, because you tell them what the availability's gonna be, like how many hours, um, a day, how many days a week, um, and then where they can, where they can go. Um, 'cause, you know, like, some cities, and I think Blue Springs might be one, you, you, they only pay for trips that are inside, um, the city. Obviously, we don't have some of the medical facilities here, so we would probably not have those same rules, but it's kind of open-ended up to whatever each city thinks is best for, for them, and so the cost varies with that.
I was thinking when we sat down with, uh, Blue Springs and Independence, the prices ranged, uh, and tell me if I'm off here, Ken, but I was thinking it was in between two dollars to eight dollars per trip. But, uh, Independence has their own transportation system-
Yeah, they have the Indy bus that-
Uh, and they serve, you know, everything from, I mean, they, they can, they can, uh, handle, you know, somebody that's, uh, paraplegic in a wheelchair, or just somebody that, uh, doesn't have transportation, who has special needs, or if they're above sixty-five years old. So, Independence handles pretty much every different type of transportation. What we wanna do with our survey results is narrow it down. Okay, do we have, uh, more people that have, you know, more seniors that have a need? Or is it people with disabilities, or is it just, uh, general transportation population? Uh, so once we're able to get all those results together, then we can visit with Oats more specifically about, okay, it seems that we have people that need this service, and their most likely transportation route is going to be from A to B, uh, and then Oats can build a price for the city based off of that, and the money that we budget is, is intended to subsidize that rate to bring the price down for the residents.
So you said that's going to be in a couple of weeks or so, you're going to have that information?
I would say we have a game plan as to which direction we're going within a month or two.
Auburn Baman?
Nothing to report tonight.
Next up is Mary's report, uh, there's a couple things. Uh, number one, I think we need to look at, uh, our fireworks ordinance, and instead of this board the week before, Fourth of July, being like, okay, well this year we're going to do Fridays, Saturdays, I think it needs to be set like, Fourth of July falls on a Monday, so these are going to be the days allowed, falls on Tuesday, these are going to be the days allowed, because I, you know, I, I took a lot of complaints regarding fireworks, and, you know, a lot of people were upset with us, thinking that we just changed the law because that's, you know, people, you know, it's, it's elect, people do whatever they wanted to, because they saw us increasing that time as just changing the law because we wanted to. One lady actually called me nothing but a hillbilly.
Mayor of a hillbilly town.
So, so I think we need to look at, you know, you know, I mean, if we want to do five days, that's fine, you know, whatever, but I think it needs to be set, and, you know, and by ordinance, that way every year this fourth, I'm having to look at saying, you know, let's do this or that. So, I'm open for suggestions on what is too long, or not long enough, or... I mean, like, next year, I mean, we shouldn't run into, well, we'll be in a little, the problem then will be, is we'll still have, I mean, the problem we face is we're always going to have people shooting off on a weekend. So, I mean, do we allow that by extending the time? Or do, I mean, this past year theoretically, we probably could have gone without Sunday night and Friday night, probably. I mean, you have crazy, and, but does that get too confusing for residents, saying, oh, we're going to allow them on the second, or we're going to allow them on the first, the third and fourth, so I mean, does that get confusing at that point, so?
So what are you allowing on New Year's Eve?
Well, right now, I don't think it's really allowing New Year's Eve, is it?
And guns only.
Yeah. But I'm open to suggestions on, you know, because I think Blue Springs extend, extended theirs a bit, but not as much as what we did.
Yeah, and I think a lot of places, um, also shut it down at like, uh, one AM on the fifth.
Yeah, I, I think, I think going to July fifth made them a little much.
I think probably people that were already worn out from the fireworks on the fourth thought, oh, we've got a whole other day now.
Yeah, I feel like we got, I got something about this, like, really, you're letting it go another day. Which, I mean, the fifth wasn't that, you know, bad, I mean, there was still people shooting them off last night, so.
People that lived behind me decided to have a fireworks show at nine thirty last night, which my four-year-old appreciated.
So I don't know, staff wants to get together and try to figure out, I, I just would like to have it set with this board, doesn't have to make a decision every year to change the dates. That way we can say, you know, this is the law, it's on Tuesday, this is what's going to be allowed to do. And probably the police department would be the one, because what we fall into is, like this year, if we wouldn't have allowed the weekends, they're still going to do it, but then it's, what do we do about that? Do we light them all up here for Mr. Cook to take care of on a fourth night? I mean, I don't know. I mean, what is the, what is the penalty for, is it just a general sum, I mean, what penalty be for?
Shooting fireworks off on.
Five hundred dollars and, uh, ninety days in jail, that's the general penalty provision. The problem really is, is, uh, obviously not my problem, City Court, Chief's problem, uh, going out and, and forcing arresting sight. Because it's, it's as broad as the ocean.
Yeah, I mean, is that an actual arrestable offense, where you bring them in, or is that just, you could just take it?
You chose to, but citation could be, be issued realistically, if they're driving down a residential block, and there's fifty people out and have them shoot fireworks.
It could be, it could be the twelve-year-old kid who's actually lighting it at that point.
Why is it considered, who actually shot this one? Um, you do a lot of warning, saving, but, uh...
So if we look into that?
Yep.
You have about a year.
Can do.
Uh, my second thing is, we were approached with an opportunity, that's, I think, a good one, just to kind of give you a little background, most of you probably noticed, but uh, for the fair this year, we have, uh, ninety-eight point one KMBZ coming in and doing a Grand Valley City Spotlight. So they will be here all day on September eighth, uh, broadcasting live from Grand Valley. Their shows, uh, up to that, I mean, a couple of weeks before, they will, I mean, promote, they're going to promote Grand Valley and the fair, and every, you know, everything about Grand Valley with, uh, ads, radio spots, things of that nature. Uh, the shows that are coming out are very popular shows, so we expect a good crowd to, to be out here on that, on that Friday for those shows. We've already, and that's already taken care of and done, that's something that we've already done, and we're going to have some, some, I mean, they'll be having some of us come on the air, they'll have local businesses coming on the air. So we're, we've already been talking to businesses about that, about who's going to do radio spots and those things. Well, they contacted us last week with an add-on to that, to see if the city would be, uh, interested. And basically, they want the, the radio called us, the city, uh, the city of Grand Valley wanted to be the exclusive sponsor of the new, uh, Dayton Moore radio show, who's the GM of the Royals. So with that, for the next three months, uh, we would be the exclusive sponsor, you know, so every Friday he has a show. You know, it's going to be, you know, Dayton Moore Show, brought to you by the city of Grand Valley, and then whoever else in town we can get to help us, which, you know, we've talked to businesses about the other things, so I know there's some, this is one, this drop off, like Thursday or Friday, right?
Yeah.
So we haven't had time to ask the businesses specifically, but we're confident we have businesses that will, you know, help us out with the cost of it. You know, because it gets them promotion too, I mean, it's a very heavily listened to radio show. We think it's a good time to do it, with, you know, our commercial permits being up, our residential permits being up. The only thing is, they are starting Friday, so they need to know tomorrow if we're going to do this.
How much is it both?
At five thousand a month, so it'd be a total of fifteen thousand. So with that though, we're not expecting to pay all that, I mean, we have businesses who are going to kick in. But in order for us to tell them tomorrow that, yeah, we're going to do this, we need to make sure we have the backing of the board, because what we'll be doing is we'll be going out and getting reimbursements from businesses that are being going on, they'll be getting advertisements as well to reimburse us for the fifteen thousand dollars.
It would be fifty, sixty-second commercials per month, um, be the exclusive sponsor of the show, and realized sponsorship doesn't seem something so important, when you think about it, why is the city of Grand Valley doing this? But it's kind of a smart move that we've seen the city of Lee Summit do recently, and at a time where our commercial, uh, construction is so highly visible, and we're trying to attract business, uh, this is going to have, I mean, it's going to put the city's name out in front of, um, people that listen to those shows, decision-makers, I mean, they have, they have a, a really good, uh, business demographic that, that follows, uh, six-ten and KMBZ. Uh, and I think, I personally think that it's, it's a unique opportunity, similar to what we did with the, uh, video that we did through ICMA TV last year. It's just a good opportunity to kind of set the bar out there, put Grand Valley's name out there, and for people to be like, wow, Green, Green Valley is sponsoring this. Um, uh, kind of maybe change the perception of, of what Grand Valley is.
I mean, we get one person to come out and look at Grand Valley, because they heard on the radio, and they buy a house out here, it's going to, you know, pay for itself.
I think it just makes us more, much, much more vis- visible, and it's, it's not a pride thing of wanting to be on the radio or being marketed, I just think that it's a unique opportunity for us to be able to put our name out there, and to attract the attention of, of decision-makers that, uh, would come to Grand Valley to do business.
And just for example, like I know Price Chopper is the sponsor of the Royals, we haven't had a chance to reach out, so we have contacts up there, but I'm, that would be somebody we'd reach out to, the, see if they want to, you know, help pay for it, to get themselves some more publicity, and we have, you know, other businesses in town I'm sure would jump onto. So it's not going to be, obviously, not be fifteen thousand dollars, I mean.
No, I don't think so. I think it'll probably be, it's, it's kind of like the, the property purchases that we've done in, in the past, it's, you know, kind of an unconventional way of doing business, but with the Ponderosa property that we acquired, and that we were able to turn back around and trade or sell to other banks, uh, we ended up with, you know, very little out of pocket for fifty-two acres that we had out there. It's kind of the approach that we're taking with this marketing thing, is looking at unconventional ways to, uh, reach people and, and business, uh, decision-makers.
We have, we have money to budget in my discretionary fund, city administrator's discretionary fund, but they won't be all upfront either, though.
No, no, monthly.
Huh? Yeah, so we'll skip out a month.
Good question, or, well, comment one, that works out to about a hundred bucks a commercial, right, for a sixty-second spot. That's probably pretty good, right?
Yes.
Um, will the radio station help the businesses that help provide, uh, you know, reimbursement, so to speak? Will they help create a sixty-second commercial?
Yeah, they do, they, they write that, we tell them kind of what we want, and they write the scripts and everything. They're actually going to have us come down there and report some of them ourselves.
But it'll be, yeah, we can do co-sponsorships, um, so the businesses that help support the marketing initiative can get coverage as well. Uh, because what I anticipate is that, yeah, the city, the city of Green Valley would have, you know, X amount of the sixty-second commercials, but, um, I think we get the, the, the most publicity that we get from this is, uh, you know, the, the intro to the Dayton Moore Show sponsored by the city of Green Valley, you know, whatever the tagline is that we're going to throw out there.
And part of it actually, it's fifty thousand dollars, but half of it goes to his charity. So we actually, my understanding is, we go down there and present them with one of those large checks, it's a big photo opportunity with us, and Dayton Moore and the charity and all that, so.
Like I said, it's definitely an unconventional marketing method, but I think that it's a unique opportunity.
So, because we would have to, what, next time, have an ordinance for it, right, because it'd be.
Uh, resolution.
Resolution.
I mean, we could actually, you could pass it, you could do a motion, and above tonight, you wouldn't even need a resolution, if you, if you wanted to do that, but, um, I just need an indication as to whether, because tomorrow I could.
Yeah, so we got to let them know tomorrow, because they want our logo.
Are they actually going to get a logo?
They want the logo tomorrow, we already said, I was going to.
We can't take a picture of your shirt and say, put this on the internet.
I'm forward if we actually get our logo.
Yeah.
Yeah, the logo, the logo will be on the website that advertises the show, and then I guess it'll be on the check and stuff too, and they do the big check. That's what he said, he said they want the logo tomorrow, I said, make sure it's in the right one.
The only question is.
Is there any?
Yeah.
But, do you want, uh, do we want, we've recently used, because of the, the color, uh, palette that we use on the website, you know, the most recent logo is that, but it's a blue color. Is the board okay with that?
The color doesn't bother me, just with this logo.
Yeah.
So, that's everyone's thoughts.
Are we going to get the info to the business population, or would be utilizing?
Yeah, we'll be reaching.
Well, I don't know, you know, you have to, you have to plug in.
Partnership, yeah, reaching out.
And I've been, I, I imagine in communications, a lot of business, because of fair stuff, so, I mean.
Yeah, we'll reach out to some of the bigger ones directly, and then have Rob help us with contacting some of the smaller, or the, not even smaller, but just making sure that we make our rounds all the way around the membership.
We'll put it on our constant contact every week, and as an opportunity to market at a, at a cheap rate, at an inexpensive rate, to greater Kansas City metro. And we have connections to the larger investors in town, that might be able to maybe back a little bit more than the conventional hundred-dollar commercial, so. We can get that, a, a, a check rip to us is a tax write-off of the business, business expense, so.
Well, I got to believe that there, you know, a lot of businesses in town, a lot of them don't just do, it's not just the Grand Valley.
No, yeah.
Business, they, they travel far outside of town, so that could be a huge benefit for them.
Yeah, and this is a way to subsidize the cost, because I'm, I'm sure that show is more expensive now, after they won the World Series than it was. So I'm just pretty sure, the only reason why it's a hundred dollars for, uh, an ad is because it's such a large buy, so.
And that's not even including all the additional ads that we're getting with the other thing, I mean, we're going to have, they're pretty tired of hearing about Grand Valley on the radio, probably. It's not that thing. Last question.
Maybe they do, great opportunity.
So do we want to go ahead and see if someone wants to make a motion, or do you prefer it that way?
Yeah.
Motion from Auburn Arnold, do we have a second? Second, Auburn.
Cotton, any discussion?
All right, see you none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All for the same time? And we might be making some of you go be on the radio too, so be prepared, you will. Especially when they're doing the live and most of the fair, we'll definitely have to have some people on then, so. We'll be thinking about, you know, we'll be thinking about Grand Valley and things you want us to make sure are said also, so. Email Ryan and I if there's anything you want to make sure said, you know, about Grand Valley.
Uh, definitely, we have meat for executive session, what's the new one, has one?
All right, Walter.